Yeah.
Silence, please. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Haas?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. DeLuca, do you want to respond about the executive session, please? Mr. DeLuca, your microphone is...
Did you hear me now?
You're okay now. Go ahead.
Yes. Counsel met an executive session to and received a report from Attorney Prokoma regarding the litigation against the voter services of the counties of Pennsylvania. The session lasted from 5:30 PM until 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Moving down, we don't have any recommendations or cermline proclamation. Additions or deletions to the voting session agenda?
Mr. McGinley, I have a couple additions.
Go ahead.
I'd like to add the ordinance for the position budget amendment for the elections position, as well as the ordinance for the position budget for the sheriff.
Okay.
And I would like to have, at some point during the meeting with the county manager, I'd like to have a little discussion about the election worker's salary that I sent out the email about.
Just the two, then, Mr. Griffith?
Yeah, the two plus the discussion for the county manager section about the election worker's salary.
If that's permissible, instead of our items were scheduled to be finished at number six, the ordinance for the elections would be seven. The ordinance for the sheriff slash security would be number eight.
If you'd like, we could put that on the work session if you'd rather do it there, if that would be more acceptable.
I would recommend...
This discussion, yeah.
Okay.
Discussion on the work session.
Excuse me?
I said I would recommend the discussion on the work session.
That's what Mr. Griffith also said.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll put it through into the work session side.
Very good, thank you.
I add it when we get there, please. All right? All right, with those two additions, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Haas?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carried. Moving down to the next motion regards the bylaws and the being physically present at the meeting. Ms. Haas, do you want to make that motion?
Yes, so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. Next motion is in regards to anything that would be inconsistent with the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Kendra.
Okay, Ms. Radel? Do we have a second for Ms. Radel?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No, Walter.
No? One in opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Public comment on agenda items, please.
I don't have this Rich Mantis.
Who was that? Excuse me?
Rich Mantis.
Go ahead, Mr. Mantis.
Yeah, can you give me the first topic as an agenda items? I can't get it up on my computer.
The first topic is the motion to adopt resolution authorizing county manager executed amendment to lease agreement for the subsequent properties, which is the active adult center out in Dallas, PA.
Okay, all right, I have no comment, sorry.
All right, anyone else with comment?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raible.
Go ahead, Mr. Raible.
Yes, my question is going to be on the election, you know, for the workers, for the two positions. I have a question with regards to that. If there's going to be any, you know, for those positions, I would like for it to be for consideration for the county council to, you know, for the, any complaints regarding the election office. There's no person to deal with any complaint for the election office with regards to petitions or campaign finance or anything like that. I mean, it goes straight to the district attorney if need be, or the state attorney general.
Okay, but that's not on the agenda. Mr. Raible, this is the changing of those two positions in the election office.
Yes, I know, Mr. Chairman, I'm just saying that there needs to be a position, if there's going to be a change in positions, I think that should be under consideration for that.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not for our agenda this evening.
But, but that's what you're considering for the position, right?
No, we're considering the proposed changes that were presented through Mr. Parsnick per the administrative code.
But, but isn't, but isn't that the same thing? I mean, if you're...
No, it is not the same thing. It's not the same thing, Mr. Raible.
I thought we were going to talk about that on the work session.
Excuse me?
I, I, I thought we were going to talk about the election stuff in the work session.
Well, the discussion is for the work session, but there's an ordinance regarding the election positions that Mr. Griffith submitted. Anyone else in the public?
Yeah, I have, wait, hold on, I, I didn't, I didn't finish, Mr. Chairman. Also with regards to the, the motion to adopt resolution on minimum bids for sales in the repository. I believe that if you have a vacant parcel that you're purchasing on in the repository, why would, you know, and it's being sold for $500 and then turn around and then you assess the value at whatever you feel like that it assessed at without any improvement, I don't think that's fair. I think, you know, if you're going to put it at a purchase price for what it's worth and then assess it for what that purchase price was, that's, at the valuation at the time, then that makes sense. But if you're going to do it like on the cheap and then turn around and then bamboozle somebody, you know, that's, that's not, that's not fair. I don't believe that's, that's fair. I think it should be uniform, as the assessment law says, and I think that's the way it should be done. That is pretty much everything that I have, Mr. Chairman. I will wait till the end for other comments. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the public?
Mr. Chairman, Jason Clark from Salersburg, Pennsylvania.
Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
Regarding the agenda item, thank you. Regarding the agenda item, regarding the purchases out of the repository, now that the Attorney General has made Luzerne County veto DeLuca, Ms. Prokomo, and David Pedry follow the law that's written in statute, what is the process in place now for Luzerne County to allow people that have purchased properties before September 1st, 2020, to have their properties rightfully assessed at the value that they purchased out of the repository?
Mr. Clark, that's not...
Because there are thousands of, there are thousands of people, there are thousands of people that are being charged incorrectly.
Excuse me, that is not the agenda item. You can bring that up at the end of the meeting. You're more than welcome to do that, but that's not the agenda item today. Anyone else from the public?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going down then to the motion to approve amendments from the June 23rd meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Sheila.
Saman?
Yeah.
On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No.
Mr. Urban, any abstentions?
Abstain, Mr. Chairman, I was absent.
Yep, Mr. Haas abstains. Motion carries. Old business.
Mr. McGinley, I just, under old business, I would like to have the codification placed on the next agenda for the council to work on getting an RFP by the clerk, so we can get our codification done, so we could be in compliance with the charter. I've asked about it many times and seems to be stalled in process here. So we need to get that either on the agenda, to get it moving, or do something with it?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get something moving on that. That's a, something...
How long, how long is that going to take, do you think?
I have no idea, but certainly we can get an RP ready. I, I don't know how long the process will take, because it's been...
Six years.
Is it six, or I thought it was about five or four, but I'm...
It's a long time, yeah.
But I'm sure we can get an RP together and, and get started on it so that we can get something and kind of work done this year.
Yeah, I think that says it's the clerk's job to do that, so I would suggest...
It is identified in the charter in that manner.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. If not, we're moving over to the agenda items, please. And the first item on the agenda is the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute an amendment to lease agreement for the subsequent properties management Luzerne County for the active adult center in Dallas, PA by the Luzerne slash Wyoming area Office of Aging. And Mary Rozell, I believe, is on the line, and she made the presentation two weeks, three weeks ago. Do we have a motion to adopt this resolution? Present it. Schnee? Mr. Schnee? Do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Kendra.
Okay, Ms. Radel? On the question?
Uh, yeah. Regarding the senior centers, right now with, with the COVID still going on, how, how much utilization are those senior centers receiving at this point? And have we also, are we responsible for any like Plexiglas or anything that's got to be put in there?
That's a good question, and I don't know. Ms. Rozell, are you on the line? I thought I saw your name earlier.
Yes, I am. I am, I'm on the line.
Do you have a response to those questions?
Absolutely. Right now, the active adult centers are not open for the seniors to go in. They will be reopening on July 23rd with PPE in place, including Plexiglas shields, as well as, you know, rules and regulations regarding that thing and things like that. We are currently, we have our staff there currently, because on Mondays, we distribute frozen meals to those individuals that would normally attend the center so that they can keep their nutrition.
So July 23rd, I think you said, is that correct?
July 23rd is the reopening, yes. So we're, we're doing a lot to get ready for that.
Okay. And you have all the safety procedures in place that you would need in those centers?
We do, including Plexiglas, which the state has given us adequate funding to provide.
Good. Okay, anyone else with a question?
So, Mr. McGinley, it's Walter?
Yes.
So, Mr. Rozell, so the state is paying for the Plexiglas for all those senior centers that we need to put that CDC requirement in place? Is that, nothing's coming out of the state coffers for that, or the county budget for that?
No, nothing comes out of the county budget at all for aging.
And that, and that's obviously for all the senior centers that you are in charge of, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we have a motion by Mr. Schnee, second by Ms. Radel, to approve the authorization for the county manager to enter into agreement for the lease. By roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to number two, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the submission of Greenways Trails Recreation Program grant application to the Commonwealth Financing Authority. This is something that started back before the pandemic started. We had talked about it in the work session, and it's come back to us now to move it forward. Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved, McDermott.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Second, Sheila.
Okay, Saman, on the question?
Mr. McGinley, this is the monies needed for the boat launcher, canoe launcher?
That's right.
Wasn't, was the agreement that we were not, we were going to apply for the grant and we were supposed to get money somewhere else for our portion of that money?
I believe the county manager had an idea about using the money from the fracking.
No, this is a, Tim, excuse me, I'm sorry, this is...
Go ahead.
This is, this is the second grant for it.
Oh, okay.
So, so the first grant that you applied was for $250,000, and then we're allowed to use a second grant in order to pay the second, the other match, which was the one, this is the one that you're voting on right now.
Okay.
And that would be...
So this would be match.
This would be the match. This would be a fully state-funded through, through two different grants kayak launch.
Okay.
So when it says a match of 15% of the total project cost is required, is that required by the county?
No, I'm assuming that's the, the state, the, the state forces that match. I'm assuming that has to come from the Act 13 funding.
So that's, so that's something the council would have to approve, correct?
Yeah, if we get, no, we'd have to, we'd have a lot of hoops to jump through here. We have to get both grants in order for us to do anything.
So this is just to apply for the grant, is that correct?
This allows us, this allows us to get us in the ballgame to apply for a grant.
Okay, any other questions?
So to clarify, we're, we're giving preliminary approval for the $75,000 county...
Then preliminary approval to apply?
Should materialize.
Just to apply? We don't know if we're going to get the grant to apply.
And that's $75,000 to apply for the grant?
No, no.
No.
No, that's incorrect.
I'm reading it here in the, in the papers, okay.
Incorrect. So what you're applying, what, let's back, let's back this up a second. There is one grant that you've already approved for $250,000. That grant allows for a, two, it needs, that's a 50-50 grant. Now, per the state guidelines, we're able to take that grant and then apply for the second grant, which is what is in front of you right now. For the second grant, if we were to get it, we would have to come up with $75,000 of Act 13 funding. That is a long way off. All you're approving right now is to allow the county to apply for a grant. If we get both grants, then I anticipate coming from our county council and saying, hey, great news, we got both grants, do you want to spend the $75,000 to get the $425,000 from the state? And if so, awesome, and if not, then so be it.
Thanks, Dave, sorry for misreading.
No, no problem.
Everybody okay with that?
Right, so just, and I, I don't want to belabor the point, Mr. McGinley, but I just want to make sure that we're under no obligation to take the grant at this point. We're just, we're just obligating the county to apply for the grant. If they say yes, and we don't apply, and we don't put up our $75,000, there's no harm, no foul, correct?
I, I believe you're 100% correct, and I don't believe the state would give us the money if we didn't have the match.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah, so I think you're correct on that. All right? Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas? Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to number three. Introduction of an ordinance amending the 2020 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. This is something that we talked about several times, is the amendment that's presented to us in regards to money, much of the money that has been available to us through the CARES program, through some other programs the state has been providing, and that's why we have this amendment in front of us today. It's an ordinance, so we need two, four votes to introduce it. Do we have a motion to introduce the ordinance? Present it. Schnee? Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Mr. Chairman.
Isn't this automatically introduced, Mr. McGinley, because it deals with the budget?
You are correct, and that's something I asked about during the week, and you are correct. As long as the manager introduces, which I think the manager is, right, Mr. Pedry?
I am introducing this.
Okay. So we don't need to have a vote, I'm sorry, and we will require a public meeting, and then we'll have a final vote on this budget amendment as presented. And we can have any changes or additions to that prior to any final vote, which would occur to... Anything else on that? Questions? Okay. Moving down to number four. You have a resolution declaring a vacancy on the Luzerne County Transportation Authority. You have a copy of the letters that were sent to us in that regard. Do we have a motion?
Moved, Linda Hauck.
Ms. Hauck? Do we have a second?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes, and I'd just like to make a comment, and I think Mr. Conway did a fantastic job on the LCTA board, and unfortunately, obligations have come up, and yes, I will accept his resignation with regard.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, moving on. Annually, about this time of year, we get a letter or email from the CAP group, and you have that copy of that email in your pocket, and they ask for us to provide them by this Friday, a list of five people who will serve as a designated delegation, delegate, excuse me, to the CAP Annual Conference. You see the information from last year. So we need to nominate people for those positions. So do we have a motion to open up the nominations?
So moved, Linda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Haas? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any in opposition? Any abstentions and unheard, motion carries. We're now open for nominations. Like I said, there are five positions that would be allowed for Luzerne County.
Linda, I nominate Mr. Haas.
I second that, Walter.
Okay, let me get that down, Ms. Hauck, and then second by Walter. Very good. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I can nominate Mr. Urban.
Who was that speaking?
Perry.
That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure. Mr. Perry, do I have a second for Mr. Perry?
Second, Linda.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Radel.
Ms. Radel? And Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, McDermott.
Very good. Still have two more positions.
I'd like to nominate Leanne McDermott.
Okay. And that was Ms. Saman and Mr. Schnee, correct?
Correct.
One more position?
Nominate Chris Perry.
Nice.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I respectfully decline, because I had it last year. Give it to someone else, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
One more position?
Nominate Ms. Hauck.
Do we have a second for Mr. Urban?
Second, Walter.
Okay. So we now have five names. We can nominate more than five, obviously, but we will have to have a decision on who would be the five representatives, but we do have five names at this point, Mr. Haas, Mr. Urban, Ms. Radel, Ms. McDermott, and Ms. Hauck.
I move to close nominations.
Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban, all in favor closing nominations indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Since we have five positions and we have five nominees, we'll have a motion to appoint by resolution.
So moved.
Want to do all five at once, since we have five?
Yes, that's, Walter.
Who made that motion?
Walter.
Mr. Griffith, you're nominating all five?
Correct.
I don't...
It's Linda. Do we have to do this by resolution?
No, we don't.
Just do it by motion.
Yeah, and then, because if you do it by resolution, the bylaws say you have to do them individually.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. Well, we have a motion from Mr. Griffith. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Mr. Schnee? On the question?
On the, on, Mr. McGinley, on the question?
Yeah.
It does say to vote on resolution that will be submitted electronically to full CCAP membership following the conference. So does that mean we have to do it by resolution or no?
Excuse me, let me look at that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Says pursuant to CCAP bylaws, our home rule counties are to make a designation of five members who are eligible to vote at the CCAP Annual Conference and to vote on resolutions. Oh, that's them, that's...
They're, they're voting on...
I got you, okay. My, my...
Elections are voting on resolutions, so I think...
Okay, okay, very good.
You feel with that?
Yep.
I think we have a motion, a second, we have a question. All in favor of the motion to designate the five people, Mr. Haas, Ms. Urban, Mr. Urban, Ms. Radel, Ms. McDermott, and Ms. Hauck? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Okay. Moving down to number six. Moving down to number six. We have a motion to adopt the resolution amending the minimum bids for the sale of certain parcels of property held in repository. Do we have a motion?
So moved, McDermott.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Second.
Perry.
Linda.
Who was that? Ms. Radell or who? Ms. Radell? On the question?
On the question?
Yes.
Could I make an amendment to the resolution, please?
Certainly may.
And, okay, and the resolution that I sent to council, which states, um, do you want me to read the resolution into the record?
Please.
Okay. Luzerne County Council hereby authorizes Luzerne County Tax Claim Bureau, or its approved agents, to use the most current and recent assessed values of all properties to determine the minimum bid amount for properties that are subject to bid in the Luzerne County Repository. Repository properties that have an assessed value of $1 to $50,000 will have a minimum bid amount of $1,000 unless they have, excuse me, unless they have been in the repository for five years or greater. Then the minimum bid is reduced to $500. Item number two is repository properties that have an assessed value of $5,000 or $50,001 to $100,000 will have a minimum bid amount of $1,000, of $1,500 unless they have been in a repository for five years or greater. Then the minimum bid is reduced to the amount of $750, $750. And lastly, the third, repository properties that have an assessed value over $100,001 shall submit a minimum bid of $2,000 unless they have been in the repository for five years or greater. Then the minimum bid is reduced to the amount of $1,000. Also, the Luzerne County Tax Claim Bureau, or its approved agents, shall submit all repository property bids to Luzerne County Council for approval, and the Luzerne County Assessment Office shall reduce the assessed value of all properties purchased from the repository to the purchase price upon the recording of the deed to the successful bidder. That's my amendment.
Okay. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith's amendment?
Linda, second.
Ms. Houck? Questions on the amendment?
Mr. McGinley, Sheila.
Yes.
Walter, or council, haven't we gone over these issues relating to the repository properties several times and found out that, and I thought agreed, that for most part they were $500 we were asking. This time, we went ahead with that 500 to 1,000. I think going into this, if it's assessed at $50,000 or $100,000, I don't even understand how they're coming up with the assessed values on these properties, because most of them, as we looked at them, were not viable.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, this is Leanne McDermott.
Yes.
Okay, and Sheila is correct that we did discuss this, especially in the Real Estate Committee meetings, which we did have public input. And as you know, these properties have gone through the sheriff and judicial sales and have not sold. The assessed value that is listed in courthouse is not what it's really worth. You know, that's where an assessment appeal would come in, and you would have to say that that value is not that accurate. Again, these properties, you're saying is going to be worth $50,000, $100,000 or more is not accurate. A lot of them don't even have the structures on, and that assessed value still reflects the structure being on there. And as I remember, Mr. Griffiths was the one who did bring up the idea of a $500 and a $1,000 minimum bid, so council agreed on that, and that's where we're at right now. Now it's changed, so now he wants much more complicated plan in place.
Well, the concern that I have is with the $500 and $1,000 issue is the fact that if somebody has multiple, I won't say acres, but they have a large property, they're going to be able to pick that up for $500, and I understand these properties are in repository. But if the assessed value is incorrect, that's why we're supposed to have field assessors. Are they not supposed to go out and do a field assessment of these properties? And I don't know if that's what they're, they're obviously supposed to do, but a field assessor would go out and look at these properties and say, this property's assessed at 60,000, but it shouldn't be? Is that what the field assessor's supposed to do? I mean, I'm hoping that, you know, that's what they would do as far as a property that's in a repository. But I just don't feel that everybody in this county is assessed on their, or taxed on their assessed value. For us to just go to the repository and say, hey, you know what? I looked at a property, it had $360,000 assessment, and it was sold for $500. Clearly, if you look at the picture, it's not worth 360,000. It probably was worth a lot less. But in, I mean, for everything that's right in the world, they were assessed at 360,000 and was taxed on that amount as well. So, you know, if somebody's paying tax on an assessed property of whatever the number is, whether it's worth that price or not, that's up to them to appeal. I understand. But we're charging them the assessed value of a property that's not worth that money. So I don't think it's fair for us to go out as a repository and just give a blanket across the board and say, okay, well, if it has improvements, it's $1,000. If it's, you know, if it doesn't, then it's just land, it's 500. I just, I just don't think that's fair to everybody who's paying taxes on their assessed value of their property.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Snee.
Could this possibly go back to the Real Estate Committee for a recommendation?
Well, I think the recommendation that we have in front of us came through the Real Estate Committee.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott, am I correct in saying that?
Yes, yes. It was a recommendation of the Real Estate Committee to have the, to have this repository sale property, minimum bid, for a property with the structure to start at $1,000, and the bid for a property without any structure, land only, to start at $500. And that was, again, recommended by the Real Estate Committee as of our last meeting on June 11th.
So I think the Real Estate Committee has done their work, and this is their recommendation coming forward. One thing I would say is those properties are in the repository, and as we all know, there's a reason why they're in the repository. It's not a good reason as far as the property value. So I think we're at that point. We're now going to vote on the amendment that Mr. Griffith read to us. Ms. Houck, have a second on that? Everybody clear on the amendment?
If I could just speak to that, too, Mr. Chair, before we take a vote?
Go ahead, Ms. Haas.
Yeah, Harry Haas. And, you know, I appreciate what Walter's trying to do. I get that, because I know Mr. Carr has an issue with his assessed property, but, you know, if we could maybe have the Real Estate Committee take a second look at that and make that into a separate ordinance or, you know, separate resolution, and really look at that, because it's, you know, dealing with blighted properties these many years, people don't want these properties. And I think whenever you make a change in policy, there's some other latent demands, latent issues that pop up. We see a lot of people get these properties, they just sit on them, they just squat on them. And if the, if the assessed value is even lower than it is, that might be a disincentive for people to go out and really invest and rehab the property. I just think we should more look at the front end on this and look at why this is happening. But not to, I, because I'm just going to support the regular, I'm not going to support Walter's amendment, but I would hope that it can be taken a look at in the near future.
Hey, anyone else? Roll call on the amendment only. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No. Amendment fails. We're back to the resolution as presented. Ms. McDermott made the motion, Ms. Radell made the second on the question.
Mr. McGinley, I want to make another amendment then. On the original, on the, on the original language, it says now therefore be resolved. Instead of saying accepted by Elite Revenue Solutions LLC, I want to change that to say accepted by Luzerne County Tax Claim Bureau, because we don't know if Elite Revenue Solutions LLC will be the person who accepts the minimum biz from now until perpetuity.
Okay. I would ask Mr. DeLuca. In that regard, did you hear Mr. Griffith's comment, Mr. DeLuca?
Yeah.
On regards to who the vendor would be to operate the Claims, Tax Claim Bureau?
You could put the Tax Claim Bureau or its designee.
Or designee?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Griffith, is that your amendment?
Yes, well, yeah, if you want to add Tax Claim Bureau or its designee, that's perfectly fine.
Okay. So that's the amendment from, by Mr. Griffith. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith on that amendment?
So moved.
Kendra?
Kendra? On Mr. Griffith's amendment to tax the Tax Claim Bureau or designee. That's the amendment. On the question? Roll call.
May I just ask for a clarification? Is that only in the last paragraph or wherever Elite Solutions appears in the resolution?
Wherever Elite Solutions appears. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yep.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Haas? I'm sorry, yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, that amendment passes. So now we have, go back to the resolution with that amendment. Ms. McDermott, is that your motion?
Yes.
Ms. Radell, do you second that motion with that amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. On that question?
Mr. McGinley, I have one more amendment. The same, I should have put it in the same one, but the last paragraph of my amendment, the Luzerne County Tax Claim Bureau, or its approved agent, shall submit all repository property bids to Luzerne County Council for approval, and the Luzerne County Assessment Office shall reduce the assessed value of all properties purchased from the repository to the purchase price upon the recording of the deed to the successful bidder. I want to make that amendment, please.
Well, you're going to have to speak a little slower and a little clearer, so I think everybody can hear that.
Okay. Sure. It said, the amendment I want to make says, the Luzerne County Tax Claim Bureau, or its approved agent, shall submit all repository property bids to Luzerne County Council for approval, and the Luzerne County Assessment Office shall reduce the assessed value of all properties purchased from the repository to the purchase price upon the recording of the deed to the successful bidder.
You want to add, essentially, to reduce the price to the purchase price of the bid, correct?
Well, basically, what it's saying...
Shortened version?
Right. The short version is whatever they pay for the bid, whatever they bid, is what the purchase price of that property becomes and the assessed value becomes.
Mr. Chairman, it's, this is Vito. I, having these amendments like this at this time makes it really difficult to be able to even give a legal opinion. I believe that that has been an executive function, and to be honest, I couldn't put my finger on it right now as to whether or not it's in the administrative code, but I believe it is, that the, it's handled through the executive branch.
It is. Attorney DeLuca is right, and I believe if I had known that this would have been an amendment, I could have referred back to the actual council meeting where I outlined where it is specified in the administrative code that this is an executive function, and the county manager has already issued that, that process will begin after September 1st.
Okay, I'll withdraw my amendment. Thank you very much.
Well, we don't have an amendment then, correct?
Correct. I withdrew, I'll...
You withdrew your last amendment, correct?
Correct, correct.
Thank you. So let's go back. We have a motion. We have an amendment in regards to the Luzerne County Tax Claim Bureau or designee in place of Elite Solutions. Now, Ms. McDermott, Ms. Radell made the motion and a second to that. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yep.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. We had two additions that were added on. The first addition was the ordinance in regards to the election positions. That was provided to council. We sent it out yesterday. I think Mr. Griffith may have sent it out to everybody on Sunday. Can you see the ordinance in front of you? Do we have a motion for that ordinance?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Is it the one that says authorizing the elimination and creation of positions in the Division 30 Department of Elections?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Do we have a motion for that ordinance?
Yes. Sheila.
Second, Walter.
The motion and the second. Since it is an ordinance, it would be, we need four votes to introduce it. Do we have a question in that regard?
What is this process?
Am I correct in saying, Mr. Griffith, that this would, this is in reference to the email that was received regarding the changing to positions in the election office to administrative assistant positions? Am I correct?
That's correct.
I don't have the ordinance in front of me, Mr. McGinley. So what is this process doing? This is creating two new positions, which is...
No, it creates, at this time, it would create a budget amendment. A budget amendment.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
It'd be great if we can go through these things in work session first so we can have the right to review these things. I don't know why we have to jump on, but okay, if the council wants, I guess this is only the introduction of it, right?
It's Linda. It is the introduction of an ordinance. I think it's a way to facilitate the discussion. We could certainly discuss it on the work session or even, you know, anytime prior to the adoption of the ordinance.
Yeah, if it's just an introduction, I mean, we could take a look at it.
Any other, anyone else? All right, we need four votes to introduce the ordinance. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Yes.
I, you broke up both times. Is that a no?
No, it's a yes. It is a yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley? Excuse me, Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell? Six yes, five no.
Okay. The ordinance is introduced. Going down to the second ordinance that Mr. Griffith sent out, I believe on Sunday, that was sent to everybody and put on the webpage on Monday. The ordinance is in regards to the position budget, again, in regards to the two positions that were sent out for the security, two positions from security that would be eliminated, and we would end up with two positions for deputy sheriffs. We have a motion for that ordinance.
So moved. Linda.
Okay, Ms. Houck, do we have a second for that?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? Again, this is an introduction. We need four votes to introduce it. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Haas? Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Uh, no.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Seven yes, four no.
Introduced. Thank you. And I think that covers our agenda and we have public comment on non-agenda items, please. Members of the public on non-agenda items, please.
Okay, I have Mr. Manson here.
Go ahead, Mr. Manson.
Okay, this is a non-agenda item and I bring it up like every meeting. We, the people in the valley are going to be crushed by the coronavirus, but the people in the valley don't realize how much more they're going to be crushed by the rain tax. And I will beat this to death until I can't say another word about it. We have to help the people in the valley because properties in the valley are going to go down so far that your repository that you just made up tonight would be worthless because properties down, you're going to have more waters, rights, properties because of people not being able to afford to pay the tax because Wyoming Valley Cemetery Authority is issuing on people. And by the way, Wyoming Valley Cemetery Authority bought a property in Hanover and they bought a property in Swarfield and are they paying the taxes on these properties? Back taxes or the taxes that were never paid? So, I mean, structural wise, we have to do something about the taxing that's going on. There's plenty of money flow, like what's his name, Pedre, Pedri said, oh, we're worried about money flow. Well, wait a minute. Now, all of a sudden, you're not worried about money flow. You want to put a canoe, a canoe rack up in the, on the river that you're going to match seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars and get a pile of money? Wait a minute. What's wrong with helping the people in the valley and saying, look, we have to do something to stop this rainwater tax or you're not going to get any tax base in the county from people because they can't afford it? I mean, how many people are back to work? Yeah, okay, people are back to work. People are earning money now. How are they going to catch up with all these back bills and assessments that they're assessing penalties on you and assessing interest on the penalty? My God, these people don't realize what's happening to the taxpayers in this valley. I really hope that I could hit home with somebody to see this point that I'm trying to bring across. And I don't know. Maybe I'm just talking in the air and nobody's paying attention. You know, COVID is an important thing right now, but a canoe rack or whatever they want to put on the river, that's not an important thing right now. I mean, people should get out and walk. I mean, who wants to go in the river? Who wants, wait a minute, who wants to go in the river when there's two boys that just died in that river from underburns to undertow? My God, people, you have to open your eyes.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Raybo.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Yes, I have, you know, I want to talk about what's coming up with the work session on the Udag money. I brought-
That's not going to come up, Mr. Excuse me, Mr. Raybo. Unfortunately, Mr. Riley's not available tonight, so we won't be discussing that in the work session.
Okay, okay. Are you still going to discuss the TIF then?
In the work session? Yes, yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, well, I would like to discuss that then. I would like to bring that up because as a member of the board, as a member of the Redevelopment Authority Board and as a citizen, I like the TIFs. I think the TIFs are a good tool. I prefer the TIFs over a K O Z or Alerta. If you had asked me between, to pick between all three, I would choose the TIF every single time because the TIF allows for the taxing bodies to get their tax revenue, you know, that's accrued over the period of time of the development. So I am wholeheartedly in favor of a TIF. I think the TIF is a worthwhile project, especially when it comes to blighted areas. But I have a procedural question. Maybe the solicitors could answer that or maybe, Mr. Chairman, you could ask the person who's going to be presenting this at the work session if they went to the Redevelopment Authority or did they notify the zoning and planning office of the county prior to the being presented tonight. I say this because that's what's required in the process when it comes to amending an original plan for the TIF. So I think that needs to be asked for tonight's purposes.
Well, I think the Redevelopment Authority is going to have an opportunity next week to speak to those people directly. You'll have the opportunity as a board person-
I just wanted to ask that question. And as far as with the county goes, I would recommend that the meeting minutes from the two other tax bodies be presented to. I see it on the agenda that the resolutions to adopt the amended plan were attached to the agenda, but the meeting minutes weren't and I can't seem to find them. So if you can, if the person who's making the presentation could send members of council the meeting minutes and the Redevelopment Authority, those meeting minutes from the two taxing bodies and any other zoning or planning meetings with regards to that TIF, I'd appreciate it, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, all right.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hello. Good afternoon.
Who's that?
I'm Aron Darto.
Who is it?
Aron Luto Darto.
Okay, Mr. Darto? Go ahead.
My question is for you, to meet with McGinley, you. And the question will be asked, is a yes or no, with an explanation of why. One, is the courthouse open? The courthouse, is it open for the masses, the taxpayers, to come in to the meeting? Yes or no?
Tonight, we're on a virtual meeting and there's no one in the corner.
It's not. Why? Answer the question, why?
Because of the governor's emergency order.
Oh, from who? All right, guess what? Ain't no fucking government-
Well, whoa, that's it.
-order, so why not?
Turn him off. Turn him off. Anyone else? I apologize. Did not know that kind of language from you.
Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Yes.
Inadvertently, I thought the ordinance for the tax collection issue was on the agenda. It was not. I need to get that ordinance introduced. So I'd like to do that. And I know you're going to have to do a public comment over for that, but that was supposed to be on the agenda.
I have a public comment for, that was part of the supplemental agenda that was sent out. So that was available and it was part of our agenda that was sent to the council. So that was available. So we already had public comment on that or available public comment on that.
Yeah, and I apologize. I thought it was on the agenda, but it was not. So I would have put it on under additions, but I did not recognize that it was not on there. So I would like to get that, a vote on that tonight, if I could, please.
Okay. Am I correct in saying that's the ordinance that would be dealing with the deadline for the face value of real estate taxes?
It's the ordinance to reduce the penalty period fees from 10% to 0% until December 31st.
To go to the end of the year.
Right.
Correct. Okay. Everybody from council, did you hear Mr. Griffith? That was one of the items that was sent out on Monday as a supplemental agreement agenda. Excuse me.
Mr. McGinley, question on that?
Oh, we have to get a motion and a second first.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a motion for that ordinance for the reduced penalty period to zero to the end of this calendar year?
Linda, move.
Okay, Ms. House, do we have a second for Ms. House?
Second.
Second.
I'm not sure who was first there.
I had Urban.
Mr. Urban? Fine. Okay. So this is to, this would be an ordinance, this would be an introduction of the ordinance, correct?
Yes.
We need four votes to introduce it. Everybody understand?
Question, Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Is Brian here or somebody? I just want to know what the cost would be to extend that, that no penalty period.
I'm here, Mr. McGinley. Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Swets, did you hear the question?
Yes, I did. Sheila, as of the information that was sent out to council on Monday and using what we had collected the last two or three years for revenue, conservatively, you're looking at $11 million, maybe up to 18. Now, that's not, that's the amount of tax and not the amount of penalty. The penalty is 10% of that. So I'm thinking probably in the neighborhood of $1 million that the county is going to not get revenue. A lot of any money that's paid on December 31st, the tax collectors have until January 10th to give that to the county. So we may not see that money, have to take out a tran. Again, whatever council does will work with, but that's the information.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
If I could, Mr. Chair, Harry Huggs?
Go ahead, Mr. Huggs.
Yeah, I wouldn't put it past this governor to move us back to the yellow or back to the red with things going on. I support Walter's initiative 100%.
Okay.
People are going to really need a break. Barry need a break and should that happen, it's going to be terrible, so.
Anyone else?
Absolutely.
Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Go ahead.
Mr. Swets, do we budget through the penalty? Are we anticipating a 10% penalty every year and that's in the budget in our real estate tax collection line item for the 110 million?
No, I think we talked about this before, Mr. Griffith. So it's not explicitly broken out. So when we look at taxes, we look at what's billed. So we take the assessed value and do the rate and then we budget for 92% of that. So it's not, hey, we're going to get 8% penalty or we're going to get 10%, you know, 8 million in penalty or 20 million in penalty. We just put it in one line. I'm just saying, using the last three years, the revenue line's been anywhere from 99 to 101% of the budget, meaning we've been very close to that 92%. If that were to stay the same, county would receive between $11 million between today and the end of the year.
But we're not, but we're not actually counting on a certain amount of money to come in through penalty in the budget, correct?
Correct.
That's found money.
Right. You're correct in that it's 10% of those dollars, but it's not, it's not like there's a certain, hey, we're looking for $250,000 or $1 million. We use 92% of the total regardless if everybody pays in face or everybody pays in penalty. That's how the calculation is done.
Yeah, and that's, and that's kind of what I figured. I didn't think that we would be foolish enough to bank on money that we don't know we're going to get because if everybody in a perfect world would pay their taxes in face, we would really be behind the cue ball on trying to figure out where we're going to get the extra funding from, figuring we were banking on that penalty fee. So I appreciate the clarification.
Well, if, like you said, Mr. Griffith, everybody paid their taxes 100%. We get 8% more than what we budget because we budget at 92%, which is the normal collection rate. So 8% more would be somewhere probably in the area of $10 million.
Correct. And in reality, when somebody goes into penalty, they're in no rush to pay their taxes till December 31st. If you're already in penalty, they're not going to go running down to the county courthouse and say, hey, I want to pay my taxes because you're already whacking me to 10%. So I don't see where there would be a rush for anybody to go in and pay their taxes in penalty.
Well, I mean, that's a personal choice that people have to make, but that's, you know, up to them. Anybody else?
Just for the, the county treasurer's office sent out a letter to all the tax collectors and I did the tally on that for those folks who were inundated with emails from the tax collectors. And right now, the tally looks like there's like 15 yeses and 12 nos. Of those 15 yeses and 12 nos, most of the people that are saying no are because they're, people are confused with the penalty, with the amount of money they're supposed to send in because the county never sent out the letter to the taxpayers to tell them that we waived the penalty fee until August 18th. And so that's where the tax collectors are having issues with extending this is because the taxpayers are confused. And one of the reasons why they're confused is the law says that if they don't pay their taxes within 30 days or by the end of the four-month period, that the tax collector must send them a letter that says that they are going to be in penalty phase. The tax collectors, from what I understand from some of them, have sent that letter out to taxpayers as of June 7, 16th, when the deadline was for face. So they've already sent a letter out to every taxpayer telling them that if they didn't pay their taxes by June 16th, which they didn't, they got a letter that said they are now in penalty phase, when in fact, they were not in penalty phase because we extended that to August the 18th. So that, this becomes the problem that we have when the administration did not send out that letter. And that's the problem. And I understand there's postage involved, but that could have been waived by the COVID-19 expenses as well because that was part of the emergency declaration. We could have done that postage easily without any problem at all.
Well, Mr. Griffith, I looked at those emails also and my total is quite a bit different than yours. It seems to me that according to my numbers, I have 17 that said no.
Well, I have, I have, I have 12 no and 14 yeses on my sheet plus two that just came in.
I don't have 14 yeses either. I have 67 people who said that they had to wait for their councils or supervisors or whatever to meet. I have four or five yeses.
So you marked them down as no, right?
No, I put them in the middle as unknown.
Yep.
Because they hadn't met. So no, I didn't-
I think regardless-
Any else?
Right, but I sent, go ahead, Harry, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't mean to jump in there, but-
That's all right, fine.
It's just the right thing to do. You know, I would have liked to see this do initially because people are still struggling out there and there's still a lot of unknowns. People are used to confusion from government. I mean, I don't want to belabor the point, but I mean, with how the state has handled this entire emergency, the data's still up in the air. There's still a lot of consistencies. I think this, this is helping our people out. It's within our jurisdiction to do so. I think it would be, would be very helpful. I understand it will cause an extra layer for our tax collectors, but nonetheless, we're responsible, taxpayers of Luzerne County and county operations. I think it's the right thing to do.
Yes, and the Senate, and the Senate passed today a bill that allows them to do the same exact thing for the school taxes. They've waived, they've extended the rebate period and they've taken out the penalty for everybody to pay their school taxes because they think it's the right thing to do as well.
Well, and we saw what happened the last time we had a bill passed by the House and the Senate. So we'll see what happens when it gets to the final decision making. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion to take the penalty away from 10% down to zero to the end of this calendar year, 12/31/2020.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McDermott, second by Mr.-
Dave, can I talk a second?
Sure.
Well, two things. If you, if you, if council likes us to send out a letter, that's no problem. It's going to be about, you know, I would say probably a half million dollars for postage. If that's something that we can, that we can do, the council will have to allocate those funds in the budget and we can sit down and go over that. That's something that, if you decide to pass this, and you know, with all due respect to council, the confusion in this, without going out to the public regarding this, is council's continual discussion on this. We went through about three or four meetings earlier this year where this was discussed. Council made a decision and now we're rehashing that decision. If it gets introduced, it goes to another public work session, which would cause another, another article in the paper in a public session and another session from there. You know, like I said from the beginning, this is council's call. You guys can do it any way you want to do it and we will work with it. The problem is, if you're going to continually talk about the same issues over and over again, it unfortunately will continually cause confusion in the, in the community. This has been out there. People understand it's now August 18th. It's now on our website. The information's out there. Everything is out there right now. It's for August 18th. It's been set. If council wants to continually talk about this and talk about have an introduction, have a budget work session, have a, and have a vote on it, that's above another six-week process where people aren't going to know what the situation is. So, you know, I guess I'm just saying from an efficiency standpoint, if you're going to vote on this, vote on it. If you're not going to vote on it, let's call it a day. And if you are going to vote on it, we're going to need funding for postage.
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Chair? Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. House.
Oh, okay. When the ordinance was passed for August 18th, wasn't there a stipulation that it would be revisited at that time?
Yes, there was a statement in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. So I don't think we have a choice except to revisit it. I mean, you know, I think this is the revisitation. If you want to vote to introduce this or not, this could be the revisit right now or it could be an extended revisit if we introduce the ordinance because it'll take another meeting to pass it. But there was a stipulation to revisit it. Right.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, Chris?
Yes.
Questions? Brian again. Brian?
Mr. Swets?
I'm here.
Hey, Brian. Regardless of the fact that we don't have in our budget the penalty phase, how much money are we going to lose?
how much money are we going to lose if it is extended to face value?
Sheriff, I, I think this is what Sheila asked, so again.
I just wanna reaffirm that, I just wanna.
So, you know, using the last three years of revenue for taxes, uh, even though we budget 92%, that's what, pretty much what we got, I think we got 99, 100, and 101 when we look at the audits. So that's very close to what we get, so if you look at that number minus what we already collected, which was over 100 million dollars, uh, you're looking at 11 million dollars, 10% of 11 million dollars. And it may be more, again, the higher the, the collection percentage is, the higher the, the penalty that is waived is. But just using the last three years as an estimate, I'm thinking about a million to 1.2 million is a realistic number.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay.
I have a question. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Leanne, I'm sorry.
Just a question again for Mr. Swets in reference to the surplus. Um, I, I know that that may be a discussion in the work session, but just to ask a question about that surplus. Would any of that be able to be used for this, or, you know, am I wrong with that, I'm not sure?
Sure, I, I, I will say that, you know, as anything, we will go with the will of council, our administration goes with the will of council. Uh, Government Finance Officers Association recommends two months of revenue, so you're looking at, again, on our, on our last audit, so not even using 2020, uh, 22 million dollars of unrestricted fund balance. The county has around nine and a half, 9.7, which is great, we had negative fund balance a while ago. But that's nowhere near what's recommended. Also, any money that we have allows us to invest additional money. Uh, if you looked at the last three years of trans, I think last year was the first year we left at the same. Before that, we've been, uh, reducing the trans. So our office has been working, you know, through these surpluses and through day-to-day management to reduce the trans, increase the investments, and when these unfortunate things like COVID hit, we didn't come back to council, uh, you know, we had the thing with the governor a few years ago, it was November, we had to come back to council and do special borrowing. We haven't had to do that. Uh, so, these are some of the things why you want a surplus.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Regarding the confusion issue that Mr. Pedri's speaking about, the, the, the only confusion is that, quite honestly, is the fact that we didn't send the letters out, and I understand back when that all happened, maybe the cost of sending postage out, I don't know where the half a million dollar comes into, other than the fact that maybe we're gonna talk about employee salaries and, and all of those type of things that he might be lumping in, but Laura Beer said she has to send out postage, it would cost about $12,000 in postage, plus manpower, plus paper and, and letters and all that, but that's certainly a reimbursable expense under COVID. And it would have been back when we passed the ordinance back in May, when we, or, I, I wanted to say it was May, when we did, did the original ordinance. The confusion comes in, the county was supposed to send a letter to the tax collectors within 30 days of our ordinance, that didn't happen. They were also, they should have obviously sent a letter to every taxpayer telling them that council has given them this opportunity to save money and give them the break that they need to get in the, in the time of an emergency, and that didn't happen. So the confusion certainly wasn't because of us.
Actually, Mr. Griffith is stating things that are not true.
What's not true? What's not true, Mr. Pedri?
What, what isn't true is that county administration was supposed to send those letters, that was never part of an ordinance or anything along those lines, that is a false statement, again.
But, the, the, the law says that when the council passed the ordinance, the council, the county was supposed to send a letter within 30 days to the tax collector.
Mr. McGinley, that was in the law, we all read that.
That's right, so why did the county not do that? Until we, until we requested it as council?
No, we did, we, we sent those letters, uh, within the 30-day time period, not only, uh, to the tax collectors, but to the municipalities as well. I mean, Brian can speak to, to that, uh, we sent the first set of letters to municipality, uh, because they needed, uh, to, to vote on the resolution to extend their periods, uh, the, the, the tax period, and, uh, we received, uh, responses from them. And from those responses, we then sent out the letters to the tax collectors within the 30-day timeframe.
Correct, and, and that was after we questioned it, it was an email sent to the, uh, Budget and Finance Bob, or was it done before that?
No, Mr. Griffith, it was not after you questioned it. We timed it out because we wanted to get the, the, uh, municipalities' positions uh, on, uh, and have them, uh, adopt a resolution. And not all the municipalities had meetings within, uh, uh, the same time or the same day. Mr. Swets took that information that we received from the municipalities, and from that, we sent the letters to, to, to the tax collectors. It was, really, we, we thought it out so that, uh, actually, uh, the, there would be consistency, and that the tax collectors themselves, in their own municipalities, wouldn't be confused. I, I, Brian can speak to the particulars, uh, and the numbers and the percentages better than, uh, I, I ever could, but believe me, it, it was, it was, we always intended to follow the law and send the letters to the tax collectors.
Well, there was nothing put in anywhere to say, send mail-in applications to everybody, but we did that as well. And that, that cost meant nothing.
Topic of this ordinance, please. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I think we're ready for a roll call, we need more, more votes to introduce the ordinance. Ms. Lawrence?
I'm all in, Dr.
Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Your vote?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas? Mr. Haas?
Harry just sent me a message saying his phone died and he's recharging it, I don't know if he's back on yet.
Okay, go through, we'll get.
He's dialing back in, he's dialing back in.
Okay.
Thanks, Linda, yeah, sorry about that, everybody.
We're up to you on voting, Mr. Haas.
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? I'm sorry, Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Yeah, that was a yes?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley, or excuse me, Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Six yes, five no.
Okay, introduce. We'll have a, a public hearing, uh, scheduled next time we meet. That completes the voting session. We're now going to the work session. Call the order. You already did the pledge, roll call, please.
You are no longer.
Present. Mr. McGinley?
I've been denied public access.
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Who's speaking? Mr. McGinley, Brian Knapp. Yes, sir.
Brian Shiner, I've been denied access.
What do you mean, denied access, I'm sorry, I don't understand quite what you're indicating. Which is our.
No public, no public comment, you, you, you cut us off of public comment, Mr. McGinley.
There was public comment.
You cut us off. The system cut us off. Right. The system cut us off. That is a fact, Mr.
If, uh, Mr. Shiner would speak, and let, letting speak, cause I'm getting several people at once and I can't hear everybody, I'm sorry. Mr. Shiner, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. McGinley, the system put us all on mute and cut us off from public comment.
Oh, is that what, the system did that? I thought you said I did that.
Yes, the system did.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, we, we received, we received a message that you've been muted, and then we couldn't talk for public comment.
Was that the end of?
So is that a go now?
No, uh, I, I was not aware of that, Mr. Shiner, so you can have your three minutes of public comment, go ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sure.
I would like to thank the county council members who voted on introduction of both of those ordinances to change the position budget. But what I fail to understand is why it wasn't unanimous. Unless the major, the people that voted against it have no intentions of allowing the manager to change the positions. Every fall, you vote on this, it is a legislatively authorized budget. Therefore, if the manager wants to make changes to it by eliminating or adding, it's up to the council to do so. So why you're all hedging it on a no vote, I have no idea. But hopefully, when it does come up for the actual vote, now that it's been introduced, it will be an unanimous vote to support what the county manager would like to do. My next thing is, why are we not meeting in public? And why are we looking at meeting at? But why at LCCC?
Cause they have a room that's.
We have nothing in the county?
Accommodate 50 people.
What's wrong with the jury room?
The jury room accommodates 26 people, or 25.
Really, Mr. McGinley, well, I think you needed to have a discussion with President Judge Vogue, because Judge Vogue said it can accommodate 50 people.
Today, as I was coming in to prepare for the meeting, and he's the one that informed me exactly what it was.
Well, he said 50 people.
Well, I think you could check with President Judge, uh, Vog, I think there's a difference there now. I think originally there was, uh, one calculation, but I think they had to redo that. But you're more than welcome to contact President Judge Vog.
Well, I just wonder why we can't get it all together on the county level to decide what we're doing and what we're not doing. It just doesn't put a good show out there. And right now, I think county council needs to put a good show out there for the people that it represents. Thank you.
Okay. Is someone else that was trying to speak? Mr. Knapp, go ahead.
Mr. McGinley, this is. Thank you, um, for your time. Um, first, I have to say, this technological, uh, glitch that we just experienced, uh, comment from the public is, uh, of necessity. Um, and with regards to meeting in person, that, I, it appears that that's not gonna happen anytime soon.
It's gonna happen two weeks from tonight.
I'm sorry, could you reiterate that back to me again?
I said it's gonna happen two weeks from this evening.
Uh, you're saying that two weeks from this evening, we will be meeting in person?
That's correct.
Council?
That's correct.
Oh, well, that, and that would, that would, that would cure all, wouldn't it, now? Um, now, now that's behind this. Well, I, I, no, it won't cure the COVID-19 if that's the goal with it, but, uh, just. Um, I, I wanted to make notion that, um, I appreciate the optimism in Luzerne County Council with regards to the kayaking and, uh, exercise associated with it. It's very important with regards to physical activity and social distancing can be kept. Uh, that, that tells me that Luzerne County feels confident that our economy's back up and roaring, or at least coming back online, and uh, that tells me that, that council feels that there'll be revenue enough, uh, to support something like this, and that's really encouraging, I gotta say, I mean, uh, you know, where other coun, wherever other counties or other states, they're, they're actually trying to clamp down things. Luzerne County's moving in the opposite direction, uh. Uh, I wanted to give a shout out on a different subject, uh, to Greg Griffith, or Griffin, New Roots Volunteer Leader Cleanout Team, um, that, he's been getting a lot of, uh, press uh, releases, and duly so, uh, somebody like this, uh, participating with cleaning up the county and including, uh, Route 11 in Larksville, which I had brought, uh, to the attention of Luzerne County Council approximately six months ago. Uh, finally, a volunteer team went in and cleaned it up. And, you know, it's, it's very important that we do this, or we'll be up to our shoulders in traps. And, and, uh, that, that is very crux, my, my viewpoint on the rain tax itself. The rain tax is because of our, the drain systems, the catch, uh, catch safety spilling up of water and then backlogging from plugging up and damming up and flooding up, uh, low-lying, uh, areas, so, uh, he really needs to be recognized, this man. Uh, and, uh, Greg Griffin.
Mr. Griffin, Mr. Knapp.
A mighty hat on his neck. Uh, and, Mr. McGinley, please, I hope what you're stating is true about in two weeks we'll be meeting in person, cause I'd like to.
We're scheduled to meet in there, it's two weeks from tonight, so, thank you. Uh, moving to the work session.
Do we need to adjourn the voting session, do we have motion?
That's right, go ahead, Ms. Sedman, please. You want a motion to adjourn?
I didn't say anything.
No, that was me.
It was Sharon.
That was Sharon.
You need a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll move, Linda Howe.
Ms. Howe, do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Second.
Second for Ms. Howe?
Second, Urban.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion parried. Moving to the work session, please. We already did the pledge, a moment of silence, call the order, roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith? Mr. Griffith?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, here, thank you.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Ms. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present, okay.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith, you wanted to add a discussion?
Um, because of the late hour, Mr. McGinley, I'll let it go, I'll just do it by email with Mr. Pedri, thank you very much.
Okay, so there'll be no additions. There's one deletion, because Mr. Riley's unavailable this evening, so number five is deleted, and we'll reschedule that for another meeting. Moving down to adoption of the work session agenda with those comments, do we have a motion to adopt it?
Present.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Perry.
Mr. Perry, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 In opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion parried. Our first presenter this evening is Mr. Michael Johns. Mr. Johns is the lead auditor with the CLA firm, and that's the firm that's been doing the audit for the county for the past four years, up and including the most recent audit. Mr. Johns, are you on?
I am.
Would you give us a recap, please, and then, uh, we'll have questions, I'm sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley, just so I know for the recap, how much time am I allotted here?
Uh, making it as, uh, short and sweet and to the point as you can, uh, but certainly, we wanna hit all the, uh, highlights and of the.
Well, thank you for having me, um, I did send out, um, about a week ago, the final audit report, as well as a letter to this group charged with governance, and a letter on internal control comments, um, as it relates to the audit of the county. We did express, um, and release our audit on July 6th, 2020, and we expressed an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance an accounting firm, um, can issue. Um, as part of that audit, um, it was due June 30th, it was six days late, the delay in the, the completion of the audit was related to some reconciling items in the county's due to, due from agency accounts, um, which are, which needed some reconciling for us to complete our audit procedures. Those. the county can compare its general funds to those Health and Human Service Funds and Domestic Relation Funds, and that caused the delay in the audit report. As part of our audit, we did make some adjusting journal entries. The detail of that are included in the letter I alluded to earlier. We also had to pass audit adjustments. Those were items that were not corrected, and management, as well as CLA, concluded that they were immaterial to the financial statements. That involved a mathematical error in the accumulated depreciation account and some legal accruals that came up towards the end of the audit as we received responses from the county's attorneys. Going through the comment, the internal control comment letter, I know we had a meeting with the Audit Committee previously to discuss the 2018 comments and what the 2019 comments will look like. I will just very briefly go over the, what we call the material weaknesses in internal controls and the significant deficiencies in internal controls. The first one is related to segregation of duties. This is a repeat comment from 2018 and prior, and it alludes to just the fact that one person in the finance function has the ability to review, initiate, and approve various duties as it relates to the payroll and the general disbursement cycle. The second comment is related to your pension plan. We test the census data that is sent to an actuary to calculate your year-end liability. When we tested that census data, it was found that the wages included non-pensionable wages, which resulted in the actuarial study having to be redone and the liability adjusted at year-end. The third material weakness is related to the due-to, due-from reconciliation, which resulted in a prior period adjustment. There were human service block grant funds that weren't appropriately segregated from the other due-to, due-froms in the past that should have been reported as due from the state of Pennsylvania, which were included in the reconciliation of the due-to, from accounts, which resulted in, one, the audit being delayed this year, and, two, the prior period adjustment being recorded. And the final material weakness, there is a fund within the county's agencies fund labeled as 970, 970. It was not included in the county's financial statements in the past. The 900 series is the Health and Human Service Funds, and this was not included in any of the other agencies' audit reports or the county's overall audit report in the prior year, which also resulted in a prior period adjustment of the financial statements. Moving on to the significant deficiencies, the first one, a repeat comment is just that management prepare an accounting manual that documents the written policies and procedures of the accounting department. The second repeat comment relates to your agency funds. There are certain agency funds that are not accounted for on the county's general ledger system that should be. The next comment is related to formal policies and procedures that comply with federal uniform grant guidance to ensure that those are in writing and properly adhered to. The next significant deficiency relates to year-end pension accounting. Because the county has a multi-employer plan, there are, and the fact that the agency has fiscal year ends June 30, there are calculations required to make the adjustments properly to the financial statements that aren't being performed by management during the closing process. And the final significant deficiency is related to the error I noted earlier in the county's accumulated depreciation accounts that was passed on for audit adjustment. Included in that letter, there are also various management comments. They are not as severe as material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, but best practice type recommendations. I will not go through them. A lot of them are repeats from that of the prior year. As council reads that letter, I would highlight that you take a special look at the information technology controls at the end of the letter and work with management to address them, given the landscape that we're currently in with cyber criminals and the such, and making sure that we do have appropriate procedures in place related to our information systems. So in summary, we did complete the audit. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can, and the comments we, I just went over, is what we noted in auditing the county and its findings at the internal controls. That's as brief as I can be. I'd be happy to address any questions that council may have.
Okay, questions for Mr. Johns?
Questions for Mr. Johns? It's Linda.
Go ahead.
First of all, Mike, thank you so much for all you've done over the last few years. I've been very impressed with your firm's auditing and the thoroughness that you've brought to the process. Just on that, that final item and the material, the material issues, the fixed asset accounting, that's an error of $900,000?
Yes.
Okay. And so how did that affect, did this required a journal entry to correct or how was this corrected?
A journal entry was made to correct the financial statements this year. Part of that error was related to an accumulation of prior years, so it wasn't material enough to restate the financial statements, but we ran the correction through this year's financial statements.
Okay. And then the other questions I have relate to also those material weaknesses, the pension accounting and the agency funds and the due-to, due-froms, which seem to be a consistent problem for us. These are the problems that slow us down every year, aren't they?
Yes, as related to audit timing, I would say the due-to, due-from has been the cause of audit delays the past couple of years. The pension information we once resolved, we were able to get, and in itself, probably would not have caused a delay in the completion of the audit.
Okay, so those, like, if we could correct those material weaknesses and the significant findings also, we would greatly increase our chances of completing the audit on time and actually having better operating procedures through the year, right?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Johns?
Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead.
First, again, I'd like to echo Linda's comments regarding Mr. John's work and his availability for questions. Just being on the Audit Committee a short period of time, it's been a pleasure to work with Mike and as well as the CLA firm. I have followed the past audits that they've done, and I have to agree with Linda in their thoroughness has been pretty exemplary, so I do appreciate their hard work. I know that's, it's a big task for them to do, and I appreciate their thoroughness, for sure. The repeat findings are troubling for me, as well as they are for other members of the committee, and hopefully, at some point, we can work through that with the committee to try and address those, so possibly, next year, we won't have the same concerns along the way. I know they've been, they've been findings for probably about the past three or four years, I believe, the due-to, due-froms especially. I know they were a concern in Commissioner days as well, so this isn't unique to budget and finance at all. I know they had the problems the same in Commissioner Day, so I do hope that the Audit Committee can work together to try and work with budget and finance and the administration to make sure that our material weaknesses are adjusted, because I think, if Mike could correct me if I'm wrong, I do think that would affect our credit rating as well if we get all those findings off of our audit sheet for our next audit. I think that would severely help our credit rating when we go for a credit rating. Is that correct, Mike?
You know, I'm not comfortable saying that if we remove them all, it would impact your credit rating. I know the crediting agencies do look at that, but I don't know how heavily they weigh that, especially where they may weigh the financial performance. But yes, they do take a look at it. I'm just not sure how much it would sway their ratings.
Okay. I mean, the big issue that I've, we, as a committee, I don't want to speak for everybody on the committee, but certainly for myself, one of the concerns that we have is the ability to have multiple bank accounts, and that's been a tough hurdle for the Budget and Finance Department for the past, I guess, eight years or so that we've been a home role form of government. So we have, we have some work to do, and I do appreciate the audit firm pointing out the shortcomings, as well as the, giving us the unqualified audit at the end as well. So thank you for your hard work, Mike, and I appreciate all you've done for the county.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mike, thank you. As you know, due to the charter, any auditing firm is allowed four years. At the end of the four-year term, we have to move on to a new auditing firm. So we do have an RFP out in the street that's being, some people replied that they have interest in. Again, we thank you for your work. I would like to say to you that, you know, any information that we question you, I hope you would send it forward so that we can have a smooth transition to whoever becomes the new auditing firm going forward. But again, thank you, Mike, and appreciate the fact that you made yourself available this evening so we could review the audit and ask questions that are current. Thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes?
Can I have just two minutes?
Yes, you can.
I heard from the Audit Committee, and I don't want a lot of time. I think to the point of some of those recurring findings, four were actually cleared. We had fourteen last year. Yes, some new ones came on, but we cleared four. The audit manual is in process. While Mr. Griffin wants less funds, he wants a separate fund for accountability in COVID, so we can't do everything. We're trying the best we can. I think Mr. Johns is correct that the rating agencies look at these financial performance more. I've said at the Audit Committee meetings, we're willing to work with the Audit Committee, that both the audit and the budget team has come very far in these last four years, and I'm proud of the work. I wish we would have made the deadline, but considering, there's four auditors. CLA does most of the work for us. Domestic Relations has an auditor that just does domestic relations. OCD has their own auditor, and then Zelenkovskaya and Axarod does about five agencies. So we're still coordinating with four auditing firms. So it's not just a 6:30 to 12:31 timeline and the data to the operations and the staff that Mr. Lipton's report talked about. It's the fact that we have four different auditing firms, a different timeline, and we work with COVID. So all things considered, the numbers, and again, I agree, I would have left it to June 30, but I think with everything going on, July 6 was a great job.
Thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Ms. Houck.
Right. So I do appreciate the work that's gone in into the audit from our county employees, and I do think we've been making some progress. However, you know, to clear four out of fourteen findings, when those fourteen findings have been there for like five or six years or longer, you know, I think we can do a little bit better, and I realize we all had some challenges this year. We addressed five years ago those component audits, and we said that the contracts and the RFPs that went out were going to include the earlier deadlines for those component audits so that they would be done. So I realized that they have an earlier year, they have, you know, a different year. The ones that have a different year should have been done already. There shouldn't have been a problem to get them in. If their year ended on June 30, and ours ended on December 31, then shame on them if their year wasn't, if their audit wasn't complete in time. And I don't know that that's the case with those. But we did address that issue and said that the component audits, those audits needed to be done, and they had to be contracted to be completed no later than April 30, so that they would be able to be in the hands for the county audit in time to get everything completed. So I would appreciate it if the manager would look into that and how those contracts are being entered into with the other agencies for the component audits, because if that's what's holding us up, then let's take care of that. Thank you.
Well, you know, as you realize, when you have all those different auditors working, it's very tough to manage all that, number one. Number two, unfortunately, I think this year, because of the current situation that we're in, some of the work had to be done remotely, and that makes it a little different because the site work, I think, is very important. So duly noted, but I think this year particularly, there are some other things that influence the completion of some audits.
Well, I understand that, but you know what? I did not hear Mr. Johns say that COVID was the problem. I heard him say the due-to, due-froms and those kinds of reconciliations were the problem. And I know, I know, because I did work, I have been working from home. I get it. I know what's going on with the virus and remote access to people and stuff, but that wasn't the reason that was given by our auditors. So I'm
I also know that the auditors
That was the reason that Mr. Johns told me that. Mr. Johns did tell me that that was a major factor in his decision in the late, was the COVID-19 thing. I want to be clear. If he's now coming off that point, that's fine, but he did state that to me numerous times.
And if, there is no question that site work is important, and unfortunately, some of that couldn't not be completed, so.
It's Mike Johns. It is correct. I did just say that it was the due-to, due-froms, which was the end result, but the COVID did cause delays in the audit reports entirely, which management then couldn't address. So yes, it is related with COVID.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving down to number two, and this is a presentation this evening regarding a TIF that currently is in place, but to enlarge the TIF. There are some parts of the information and documentation that have to be completed, from my understanding, but Mr. Toronto had sent forward information, had requested to provide the presentation to the council. But I do know that there are some things that need to be done prior to council receiving it and possibly voting on that. So, Mr. Toronto, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to present this evening. As noted, I am the member, one of the members of Stafford Point Development Group, and Stafford Development has a townhouse development in Pittston City and Pittston Township that comprises of approximately 47 acres. The 47 acres, seventeen or so of it are found in Pittston City, and 30 acres or so are found in Pittston Township. In the year 2008, the county's council, the Pittston Area School District, the city of Pittston and Pittston Township adopted what is now known as the Grandview Tax Incremental District. That district established a TIF property based upon a blotted designation that was established by the two municipalities and the county.
Mr. Toronto, just so we're clear, it was the Luzerne County Commissioners who approved that initial, not the county council, right?
Correct. It was the county
Thank you.
Through the Board of Commissioners at the time. Yes, correct. And if I noted council, I apologize, but it was the county commissioners. But through that 2008 TIF designation, we had secured the assistance of the Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority to act as our borrower. And the Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority had initiated through a TIF financing package with Fidelity Bank this TIF loan. The initial TIF, as noted in the presentation and the information that was presented, only included the Pittston Township site and not the Pittston City site. The county's Planning Commission had approved in 2008 our overall land development, and with that overall land development, allowed and created a Phase One that provided for 72 units of the 184 units that are provided for in our project. The 72 units, approximately 40 or so of those units are found in Pittston City, and 30-ish units, 32 units of those are found in Pittston Township. We are now at the point where we have roughly seven units left to build in Pittston Township, and the remainder of the units, we just started building in Pittston City. And so we have the remainder of our first phase is found in Pittston City. With the administration now in place in Pittston City with Mayor Mike Lombardo, he had shared with me some time ago that the 2011 census had found that there was less than 40% of homeownership in Pittston City that were owner-occupied, and he had established an initiative for his last tenure in office to attempt to have 100 sales that provided for a homeownership. And Mayor Lombardo was trying to use our Pittston portion of our project as the catalyst in order to get him to his 100-unit sales in the city. Secondly, the way that the TIF plan is designed, with only Pittston Township having the units being designed with only Pittston Township having the units being designed in it for the implementation of the tax, we are sort of handcuffed at this point where we need to build the Pittston City units and have to only have seven units left in Pittston Township. So, the thought process was is to blend in or bake in the Pittston City side of the project. And in February of this year, I had secured the approval of Pittston City Council to allow the enlargement of the TIF district to include Pittston City. Two Mondays ago, the Pittston Area School District had equally approved such resolution. And I know that those resolutions, those signed resolutions, were part of the package that the council has this evening. The basis of this request, though, is to attempt to expedite the repayment of the TIF. And I provided an analysis that was attached as an email that was part of your package that predominantly showed that there was going to be a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar or so uptick to the county by the county's agreement to allow this Pittston City portion to be brought into the TIF. I did a similar analysis for the Pittston Area School District, and that showed roughly a four hundred thousand dollar per year benefit or windfall by allowing it. The point that I was attempting to make a moment ago was that we can't build in Pittston Township any longer until we sell out in Pittston City. So, we're primarily guessing conservatively that it's going to be a five-year run to sell out in Pittston City before we can get to the Pittston Township remainder of the site. So, what I was attempting to do was, you know, basically create a benefit to all the taxing bodies, the developer, and attempt to satisfy the request of the mayor is to bring in the Pittston City side in order to make everything happen in a most expeditious way. Because the whole point of these TIFs, as noted by the individual who had spoken in your session earlier, you know, the TIFs are a very good tool due to the fact that it gets the tax money back to the taxing bodies in a quicker position. And as noted by Mr. McGinley, Chairman McGinley, this TIF was approved in 2008. And initially in 1990, when the legislature approved and created the TIF legislation, the initial act provided for a twenty-year payment period. And then in 1993, the legislature recognized that possibly these TIFs would not go as planned, and that there needs to be an amendment to the TIF that allowed for a TIF to stay open in perpetuity so long as there is still debt owed, that the taxing bodies would not be able to rejoin or take in the tax revenues until such time that that TIF loan has been fully paid off. Our original TIF plan provided for a 2025 maturity date. And as I just mentioned, with the TIF amendment and the plan that I have provided, and the analysis I provided, by bringing in the Pittston City side, we are estimating that it will be in 2020, excuse me, 2032, when the TIF would have been paid, when the taxing districts will be able to reap the benefit of the tax dollars. Our conservative approach is that it could be sometime into 2041, 2042 or so, a ten or so year period extra before Pittston City would be able to, or Pittston Township, excuse me, would be able to ramp up enough taxes in order to pay off the TIF. So, the initial request, and this request is attempting to bring the tax bodies in to receiving the tax revenues in a more expeditious manner than not having Pittston City in. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council has at this time.
Questions for Mr. Toronto.
Mr. McGinley, I have a couple of questions, if I could, please.
Go ahead.
I'm not really familiar with what the TIF actually, the TIF Act does, Mr. Toronto, so forgive me for my ignorance. I, you know, I know there's some things with the Koz's and things like that I'm a little bit more learned on, but these TIFs are a little bit confusing for me. And I was just wondering, I was looking briefly through the statute, and we're supposed to, are we supposed to have a council representative of some sort on the, as a representative of this TIF somewhere, and could you tell me who that has been since its Audit Commissioner days?
We initially had a TIF committee established for purposes of making a recommendation to the TIF bodies. There was a representative from Pittston City. There was a representative from the township, from the school district, and the county. I don't know, honestly, Councilman Griffith, who's the representative of the county was. We did have a TIF committee initially established.
Yeah, do you have a representative now on that same committee? The committee is still there, right?
There, we don't have, there is no representatives on the committee at the moment.
There should be, though, correct?
Other than the individuals who were on there, who were initially on there.
Right.
I don't know if the committee has ever disbanded or not, to be candid with you.
Right. So, should we have a representative from council on that committee? According to the statute.
I don't believe that it is needed.
Okay, okay. And then the other, how much, how much is the, how much of the money is in there for the Luzern County part of the TIF right now? Do you know that number currently?
What do you mean by how much?
How much money is in the Stafford, Grandview Heights TIF for Luzern County's portion?
There's no county money that is in there. The money was lent by Fidelity Bank.
Gotcha.
It was Fidelity Bank's funds that were utilized. It's just the tax benefit that the county, the city and the school district would have received. And I have provided an equal analysis of what the county would be receiving, approximately a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, the county would be receiving by not agreeing to having the TIF in, the Pittston City in the TIF. The overall net benefit was going to be three hundred and fifty thousand that the county would receive as a net effect. But there's approximately five hundred and forty-nine thousand that the county would receive by having the TIF expedite its payments over a five-year period, compared to a hundred and fifty-seven thousand that the county is sacrificing by allowing it to be in today. So, there's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar windfall that the county will be receiving over this five-year period by agreeing to it. And then going on thereafter. Because as I mentioned, it could be, if the county doesn't agree to this, it could be into the 2040s before this TIF would be paid off. You know, with the TIF amendment, the county doesn't have the choice other than to allow the district to be continued until such time that the debt is fully paid. So, at a minimum, the county is ahead three hundred and fifty thousand by agreeing to this.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I just, I think that the issue with the TIF is that those properties that are currently being built in that development right now are taxed at the 2008 rate, and then they don't get re-taxed at the current rate of mileage for the county until the TIF is settled. Is that accurate?
No, they don't. The way that the TIF plan provided, the increases in taxes also went to the TIF. So, there are increases in taxes that happen annually. The property owners in Stafford Point have no basic understanding or recognition that the TIF exists. As every property owner in Luzern County receives the tax bill, they receive a tax bill. It's just when that payment is made to the tax collector, the Redevelopment Authority acted as our conduit, and the taxing bodies, the tax collectors, excuse me, send the tax payments directly to the Luzern County Redevelopment Authority. And as the borrower, the Redevelopment Authority is required to make two biannual payments to Fidelity Bank to pay down the TIF loan. So, the taxing, the taxpayers, whatever the tax bill is for that particular unit based upon that assessment, is paid to the tax collector in the same fashion as any other property owner in Luzern County.
Okay, yeah, and that was, you know, that was one of the things I wanted clarification on. And I thought that, and I appreciate that very much. Are you, you're not asking for more money for the TIF, right? You're still going with your four million dollar original request, right? So, do you have, do you have to do a public hearing on this again? No, or no?
No. So, we're not asking for any additional funds. And to be candid with the council, we have a little short of six million dollars of infrastructure. We have used the four million dollars for the infrastructure. The developers had put in a little over a million dollars of our own money already, and we have just a little less than a million dollars to finish the infrastructure. And one thing that I wanted to point out to the council as well, predominantly, this TIF money was utilized to build a public road. If anyone's familiar with my development, it created, this enlargement of Grandview Drive roadway itself has now created itself as a thoroughfare for individuals who live in the Eustown area, for those people to get into the Pittston, the lower Pittston area or downtown Pittston. When I was a kid growing up, you would have to travel around this area either through Laurel Street or down through Parsoness Street in order to get to the city if you were from Eustown. It literally has created a benefit to the entire community, you know, not just to the development. So, there really has been a public purpose for these funds.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Toronto. I appreciate your input.
Other questions for Mr. Toronto?
Mr. Toronto, Harry Haas here. Thanks for coming out. I'm looking on Google Earth here. I see some things that are already constructed. Is this mixed-use housing, or is it all uniform?
Yep. We have, there are currently forty-one units that we have sold, and they are all townhouse-style units, either two-story units or ranch-style units.
Okay, they look like very varying sizes and things like that. I don't know if you have different economic levels, but essentially.
Yes, you're right. We range from units that start at thirteen hundred and fifty square feet and units that go as far as twenty-four hundred square feet. So, we tend to meet a big mass of people. And then, if I may, at least answering the response of the person who had asked the question during your voting session. This is a, as mentioned by Chairman McGinley, you know, this is a process to go through. The initial charge was to get the taxing bodies to consent to this change. And then I will be presenting, there was a cooperation agreement that was signed in 2008 between the Redevelopment Authority and the taxing bodies. The next process would be getting that cooperation agreement amended, which would require the approval and signature of the Redevelopment Authority. I've had conversations with Andy Riley, the director, and he is starting to put me in touch with the solicitor. So, you know, I understand that this is a process to go through, but without having the taxing body's approval to these resolutions, it really makes it moot as to what the Redevelopment Authority would do or not do.
Anyone else?
Mr. Toronto, who are the other principals or members of Stafford Point besides yourself?
There are three other principals. The first one is Armin Misholi, and Armin is the owner of Grotto Pizza. The second, and Armin and I had done another development at Harvey's Lake next to Grotto called Marina Point in 2003, 2006. The second member or partner of mine is Mark Papel. It was Mark Papel's family that owned the seventeen acres in Pittston City. And his family donated the seventeen acres to our group and to make him a member. And then the third is a, excuse me, oncologist by the name of Robert Brostock. He is a oncologist in Geisinger. So, it's the four of us are the members of Stafford Point Development Group.
Very good. And I see that Grandview, basically thoroughfare you're talking about, that is very impressive, that very straight.
When's, all things considered, when are you looking at completing the entire project?
We are hoping, we're hoping by 2036 to be done. But we're hoping that the TIF with this request would be satisfied in 2031, so that the taxes would come in 2032. But again, if this doesn't come in, we're probably pushed back at a minimum of five years. Because as I mentioned earlier, we have to sell Pittston City units first before we can go to our second phase, which are the Pittston Township units. So, the time that it would take us to sell out the remaining units in Pittston City would delay the repayment of the TIF.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Toronto, thank you. If we have other questions, we'll send them forward to you. Keep us abreast of your progress as you move forward with getting all your documentation signed up and completed. And once we have all that information together and completed, then you can present it to us again, and then we'll be looking to vote on that. Okay?
I thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to number three. This is a request for rezoning in the borough of Wyoming. Mr. Weber?
Yes, sir. Thank you for having us.
Okay, Mr. Weber.
This application was presented by Joseph and Joanne DeLeo. They own DeLeo Service Station at the corner of Ninth Street and Wyoming Avenue in the borough. They bought the property immediately adjacent to them at 15 Ninth Street recently. It formerly had a residence. It's in the R1, single-family residence zone. Their property, where the service station is, and this residence share the driveway, so there was an interest in being able to use the property to expand their parking. And they are seeking to get it rezoned to B3 like the rest of their property on the corner is. And their intent would be to remove the house, fill in the foundation, and use the lot for parking for their business. From a planning commission standpoint, the commission looked at the application, assessed it according to the comprehensive plan objectives, and determined that from a comprehensive plan standpoint, it's consistent. And from a zoning practice, it is also consistent being an expansion of an adjacent zoning district to the contiguous lot. So, they recommended approval at their meeting earlier this month, and we're here this evening for you.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Weber?
Mr. McGinley, did, Mr. Weber, did they have a public hearing on that zoning at all? Did they do that?
For the planning commission, yes, it was. It was duly advertised.
Okay. Did you have any opposition from any of the neighbors, or?
There was no comment at all.
Oh, wonderful. I will state for the record that I think DeLeo Auto Repair Shop has been there for decades. He's probably one of the better, from somebody who's in the trade, some, one of the better people who has been in that business. So, I certainly, I certainly think that he could use the extra parking, for sure, and he would take care of the land. So, I appreciate the opportunity to question you. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Anybody else for Mr. Weber? Mr. Weber, am I correct, I think Mr. DeLeo had a future, or former, I should say, request for some rezoning related to his business?
Yes, three years ago, the DeLeos and the owner of the former block insurance property, which is next to the other two parcels DeLeo's own on Wyoming Ave, were before council for a rezoning to zone those three parcels to B3,
Yeah.
which council approved in 2017.
Okay. So, we've had some requests before, and everything seems to be fine as far as the neighbors. There's no problem with anybody voicing a complaint about that, correct?
There was nobody at the planning commission meeting last week.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Weber? Thank you. Moving down to number four. This is an annual communication that we get from the Luzern School Call Web Board in regards to their budget. And I think I can say at this point, I don't believe we have ever in the past approved the request from their board.
I would verify that, Mr. McGinley.
Excuse me?
I said I would verify that.
That's correct.
Do we have a representative that is invited to those board meetings and attends? Liaison is supposed to be the vice chair of council?
I'm unaware of that at this point.
Okay.
As you know, Ms. Hock, we've had numerous conversations with you over the years. And I don't think we've been very successful in some of our conversations, but, you know, they operate and they're part of our county and part of the School Call County, so. But there was a request, and you had the information as was received. Any question in that regard? Hearing none, we're moving down to number five, which was, I announced earlier that Mr. Riley was unavailable this evening. We will reschedule at a later date. And we're at the Division Reports, and Mr. Pedri? Mr. Pedri? I can't see, is Mr., Mr. Pedri? Your microphone is muted. Are you open now? I can't see, is Mr., Mr. Pedri, your microphone is muted. Are you open now?
Yep.
Mr. Pedri, do you want to speak in regards to division reports?
I just got a text from him that he's having difficulties getting on.
Well, we have the reports. I'm sure if there's questions, Mr. Pedri will be happy to respond to those.
I'm here. I'm back, I'm back, I'm back.
Okay. Mr. Pedri, do you want to speak to the division reports, please?
Sure. The division reports are set for June twenty twenty. The, obviously ended our emergency declaration for the coronavirus. You know, as I've stated in the public in the past, I've heard numerous rumors daily now at this point. My phone's ringing, emails. I hear we're going back to yellow. I hear we're going back to yellow. Everybody knows somebody who says something and knows somebody else who made a comment to somebody else at a barber shop and knows somebody else that made a decision. That's, that is, I have received no word from the Department of Health that we're moving back to yellow. I'm going to say that publicly. Now, obviously, yesterday, we only had one increase in coronavirus cases. And I do think that if our numbers are going to be in the thirty to fifty range for a couple of days in a row, that's going to be a major issue that we'll have to deal with. But we are not there at this point. We are only not there at this point due to the hard work of every single Luzerne County citizen. People are still wearing masks. We're still washing hands, still utilizing social distancing, as you can see in the courthouse, as when people come to do their business in the courthouse. But I want to be clear for everybody on this call, I have received no indication from the Department of Health that we're moving back to yellow or anything like that. Our numbers are solid here. Thank God we haven't been hit as hard as, like I say, Allegheny County with a second wave. But we need to stay vigilant and keep doing what we're doing now as we move forward on this. I don't know when this pandemic will be over. I don't know how long it'll take, but we all have to adjust to a new normal of wearing masks and obviously the good sanitation, I mean, the good hygiene that we're doing now.
Questions for Mr. Pedri?
Yes, it's Linda.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Pedri, so in the division reports, in, well, at least one place that I saw, it says that one employee remains furloughed. Are the employees back to work? Was that as of June thirtieth? Or do we still have people who are furloughed?
We brought the employees back to work on July sixth. There was one employee who was still furloughed in the tourism department due to the fact that the tourism revenues are, we're hit pretty hard with regard to the coronavirus.
Okay, but everybody else is back to work?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other question I had is on the zoning ordinance, that the zoning ordinance amendment is going to be brought to council at some point. Who's working on that zoning ordinance?
Well, it was Heath Eddie. Heath Eddie obviously left us, moved to Wisconsin. We wish him luck in his best, to his future endeavors. And we hope that the next director will pick up where he left off and move that forward.
Okay, and then just one more question. Under transportation, you have the long-range transportation, the joint county plan. Has any of that had involved any discussions with merging, like, you know, merging LCTA and Hazelton or, you know, the combined efforts of Lackawanna and Luzerne?
At those, at those meetings, and there's a meeting tomorrow that I'll be attending, they have discussed, there's a difference, a couple of different studies that they're looking at. It also would include Colts, the Lackawanna County Transportation System. I don't think it's going to be on the discussion phase at this point. I'm not sure if they actually started a study or anything along those lines, but there has been some discussion on that.
Oh, it's been in discussion for like twelve years, so, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hauk, there was a report done by PennDOT. It's probably six years old, at least. It was done by PennDOT in regards to what you just spoke to, merger of the Lackawanna County, which is Colts, LCTA, which is Luzerne County, and also Hazelton Transit. But that was done by PennDOT, like I say, probably at least six years ago, maybe more.
No, I know that's been a thought on PennDOT's horizon, but, and you know, back in twenty eleven, twenty twelve, there was a lot of plan. There was actually a plan to bring Hazelton and LCTA together, and then that kind of fell apart in twenty twelve. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Chris? Hey, Linda, maybe you can answer this question. Well, how does it start? How do we get it going? How do we get that ball rolling and get a consolidation together?
Well, I think that committee, that transportation group is probably the best starting point because they're already there, right? You're already at the table.
Dave, can you do something about that?
Report had a potential plan also to look at the merger and come up with something, but I'd have to go back and look at that report in detail because I don't remember all the specifics.
I will, at the meeting tomorrow, I'll review it with them and say, you know, council's asking for an update on the consolidation of all the transportation systems within our two counties. And I'll report it back at the next council meeting.
Great, thanks, Dave.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we go down to the capital plan. We've had the capital plan since June first. Manager Pedri has submitted that to us. My plan right now is we'll have it on the work session again next meeting, the twenty-eighth. The first meeting in August, we'll have it on the voting session to see what the vote results in. And if we don't do anything in that regard to the capital plan, the plan that was submitted becomes approved on September one. So if anybody has any amendments or submissions in regards to the capital plan, please forward those so we can speak to them as a work session two weeks hence. Okay, hearing nothing else on that regard, public comment. Members of the public who would like to speak?
Mr. McGinley, right now?
Go ahead, Mr. Nat.
Hello?
Go ahead, Mr. Nat.
Mr. McGinley, thank you for your time. This is something that I was thinking about with regards to the lack of funds for upkeep of the bridges that we've encountered responsible for. It's in respect to Nanticoke Fire Responsible for Pittston Township. I bring this up because if there isn't a, let's say, if there isn't a sure sign as to when they can address that bridge, anytime soon, they've already reduced the tonnage on its weight limit to fifteen thousand tons. And the fire trucks exceed that. So, you know, I'm no professional here about this, but if we don't see revenue being generated to address that bridge, is this, just from a citizen who's concerned about fire responses to Pittston Township by the city of Nanticoke, I was thinking that maybe it might be back if it's in a situation where it keeps deteriorating and deteriorating and there's no funds being generated to bring, drop the bridge down to one way out of Nanticoke. And this way, there isn't that much stress continually being added to that structure, and that will give some time to later get to the bridge, which is in need of repair or reconstruction of it. Did they extend the tax deadline? Did you understand that, Mr. McGinley?
I heard re-said, Mr. Nat.
Did they extend the tax deadline?
Wait, Mr. Nat, are you finished? Okay. Who else would like to speak?
Yes, Dan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Ari Datto.
No, Mr. Datto, not after your language, you are.
Oh, Mr. Timothy McGinley, you shut the fucking phone off, okay? Well, Mr. Timothy McGinley, my question.
Who else would like to speak?
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Raybo.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Yes, I appreciate the report given by Mr. Toronto. And I would hope that, like you said, Mr. Chairman, as far as the documentation, that's, you know, outstanding, that we can all take a look at it and see the details as far as that project goes. As I said, it's worthwhile. I think it looks.
Are they going to extend it or not?
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Raybo has the floor, please. Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Yes, I would just like to say thanks to Mr. Toronto for his presentation. And I hope that the documentation that's outstanding, we could all look at and, you know, answer some questions. I would respectfully, Mr. McGinley, disagree with him on the fact that each taxing body needs a representative for the TIF committee because that way it allows for the respective taxing bodies to understand and also see how the project is progressing. I think that is needed because that is why even you yourself is on the Plains Township TIF because of, you know, to see the different, the ongoing progress for the TIF. That's why the TIF committees were allowed to be established. So I would respectfully disagree on that. As far as the U-DAG money, whatever the, whenever the presentation is by Mr. Riley, I hope that is either at the next meeting or before the budget meeting because that way the council can ascertain as far as how to utilize that money, especially with small businesses now getting, trying to get back on their feet, the ones that were deemed as non-essential by the governor. And I hope that the county, what they received for the expenses for the COVID funding through the CARES Act can be utilized to help those small business owners that have been hit very hard. So I hope that the council and management can, you know, figure out a way to help those business owners, you know, those small business owners that were really impacted by it because that will affect the county, especially during budget time, even for next year's taxes, not only for this year's taxes. So in closing, I want to appreciate the presentation and also as far as with the council members who voted for the, you know, the introduction for the ordinance. And I hope that the ordinance would be approved at that because the people are still hurting out there, as Mr. Haas said and Mr. Griffith said. It's just, it's just dire out there and now we have uncertainty going into the end of the year. I hope, I hope that's not the case, but, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo.
I hope that's wisdom, yeah, I'm finishing up. I hope it's wisdom that can do the right thing and convince the governor. Thank you.
Someone else from the public?
Man.
Mr. Man.
Okay, Mr. McGinley, they're using these acronyms in TIF and UD and Judy and Booty. And I wish they would just say what it is because the public, I have no clue what the heck this is, that's one point. And the next point is, a public meeting is going to be in what building? LCC is a large campus.
We'll have information about the meeting on the website and on the agenda when the agenda is posted.
Okay, because like I said, LCC is a big place. I went down there for some classes in the evening and people are really going to be wanting to know. And then let me get back to my thing about the taxes. The people, if the money is flowing in the county, why do you want to punish people with taxes and penalties? I mean, it's going to be brought up at that meeting, of course. But the basis in this area, people are March, April, May, June. There's four months that some people have not worked and not collected a paycheck. And they want to spend, they want to put a seventy-five thousand dollar deal to match funds from the state. Would everybody in county council look at themselves in the mirror and say, would you want to have your child swim in the Susquehanna River below the sanitation department or any place in there? Because I don't believe that it's a safe thing to do with all the undercurrents and undertoes. My God, the two boys just died in the Susquehanna River. And Pedri wants to put a ramp there to introduce new people into the river and get caught in these rip tides? I don't think that's a good idea, folks. And that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Brian Shiner.
Go ahead, Mr. Shiner.
I appreciate the cooperation that the auditors had with the administration, in particular with County Manager Pedri. But whatever comments the auditor's made to him have nothing to do with the audit itself. County Council, our elected officials are responsible for the audit and the auditors report to them, to you, our county council. So if they didn't include those comments to county council, then they really don't exist, as Ms. Hauk tried to emphasize earlier. And I think county council needs to get a handle on what their job is and what their responsibilities are to the people that they represent. They don't represent the Solicitor's Office. You don't represent the County Manager. You represent us, the people of Luzerne County, and I hope you would finally get it through your heads that that's your job. That's what we put you there for. That's what you get paid for, and we'd appreciate you doing your jobs the right way. Thank you.
Anyone else, please? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, hold on a minute.
Go ahead.
Earlier, I'd like to agree with Mr. Nat concerning Mr. Gray Griffith. Everybody knows his tireless work with the opioid crisis with his cleanup of blighted properties. And I'd just like to thank him for all his volunteer work and for the work that he's been done, he's been doing. And to put it simple, here's a man that every day tries to make Luzerne County a better place to live for us and our children, our grandchildren, and I'd just like to thank him personally on behalf of council that I wish we had a hundred of Mr. Gray Griffiths.
Very nice comment.
The second item concerning the next meeting when we meet.
Right.
Again, as Mr. Perry brought up last time, that, just so the guidelines are being met. And I also think that call-in or zone should be eligible to the public and elected officials that might have concerns about meeting in a room itself. But I'd like that option to be open to the bulk of the public.
An option will be open, Mr. Snee. An option will be available.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Also.
One other item.
All right, Mr. Snee, one more.
For my buddy, Mr. Mata, maybe we should rewrite our, send that letter back out to President Trump since we haven't had any correspondence from him. Send that letter and see what could happen. Send that letter and see what could happen.
Yeah.
Mr. Griffith, I think you wanted to speak?
Yes, um, I, I don't know what the procedure is, maybe you as chairman could instruct me or let me know how we, how do we draft a proclamation or for someone? Uh, Mr. Walsh, Jim Walsh, a gentleman who just recently passed away, well, we're two, well, we're two veteran, a very good friend, uh, colleague, who has men, attended many, when I was in Wilkes-Barre City Council meetings, and an advocate for the flag and freedom, and, and all the things that he's done over his years of, of, of being an advocate for, um, our flag. I was wondering how could we make a proclamation that we could present possibly to his family in regard to that? What's the procedure?
All we need to do is get some information in regards to Mr. Walsh's, um, biography at this point, which I'm sure is readily available. And we can get a proclamation ready, and we'll have it for, uh, the council meeting that follows that.
Uh, is that something that I can do as a member, or is that somebody else should do that?
You can send the information forward, we'll get the, the proclamation ready.
Okay, so do I send it to you, you, or to the solicitor, or who do I send it to?
Oh, send it to this office.
Okay.
It's Lawrence or myself, and we'll, we'll get the proclamation done and get it typed up.
I will try and get that information to you early this week, sometime before Friday, and then you could get it off to the proper places and get it drafted, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, we would, we would, you know, if you want to present it to the family, which seems to be the proper procedure, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but we'll also have it on one of our, um, agendas items, so that people recognize the fact that Mr. Walsh received that proclamation.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Mr. Walsh was also a real strong advocate for the, uh, wrestling, uh, programs in Wyoming Valley.
Yes, you're, you're, absolutely. All right, well, thank you, I'll try and get some.
Okay, do we have a motion for a German?
Present it.
Mr. Snee, do you have a second?
Second, McDermott.
Mr. McDermott? All in favor indicates by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, and the abstentions, none heard, motion carried, thank you. Next meeting tentatively scheduled for LCCC. Information will be available on our webpage. Uh, obviously, we're gonna have several public hearings prior to that meeting, so probably tentatively, we'll, we'll be getting a public hearing somewhere around five-thirty, I would think, with the voting session scheduled for six-oh-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.